Meeting of the City Council, Regent City Council, meeting for total of 18,000, 19,750. What please call the local council members?
Alderman Jawinski, President, Alderman Toward, President, Alderman Cruda, President, Alderman Keith, President, Alderman Randall L, President, Alderman Rogers, President, Mayor Clark, President.
Next on the agenda is indication, ladies and gentlemen. Great, alright, that means I get to pray. Where we at? That means I get to pray. If you please stand for a second. We need to play the meeting. We bow with our heads bowed, our soul, ask to receive the guidance, wisdom, and faith in the Lord. We know without you we have nothing, and you are we are everything because we can accomplish all things through you. We ask of God that you continue to guide us as we make decisions for the city, as this council continues to work together, as we continue to come together as a community, to do not only our work, but the work of your people. Glory and honor, because all of this, whether we know it or not, Lord, revolves to you and it will be yours and so forth. In Jesus' name, amen.
One more.
One more. One more, we are.
Can I hear you?
I don't know what happened. Come, thank you, I got a big mouth, Mr. So, up next on our items, on our agenda is public comment. Please be aware, one is that public comment is limited to 30 minutes, 23 minutes. Point of order, yes. Point of order, recognize the chair, to the ultimate from the fourth board.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to add two discussion ideas to the current agenda.
Okay.
Okay, the first one is extending the timeframe for seasonal workers for the street department. And the second discussion is the purchase of two additional street trucks for the street department.
Who has that as a five D? Of course, pending proof, five D and five E.
You said D and E, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Here's a motion on the floor.
Second.
There's a motion made by the fourth board and second by the fifth. Would you, whenever you're ready, would you please call the board?
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Randall L?
Yes.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman Toward?
Yes.
And Alderman Cruda?
Yes.
Motion carried out.
Okay, now on the agenda is public comment. Please note that public comment is 30 minutes, that's three minutes for a person that allows the time to continue to speak. Our first person to speak is Gigi Gale, followed by, I think it's Nicole Palmetier. And I may have just destroyed that, and I really apologize. Yes, and welcome, thank you.
Dustin, can you guys hear me? Do you can hear me? No? No? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Aldermen and Women, Council People, Citizens of Harvey, and also Business Owners and Workers of Nightclubs, Bars, Restaurants. Let me hear a round of applause for all the people that are here from nightclubs. We're having a good day. Thank you, guys, all for showing up. My name is Gigi Gale. I am Managing Partner from Sky 11. I'm pretty sure you guys are aware, it used to be the Sky Box. We've been in business for over 20 years. This is my partner Lisa, Lisa Rodriguez. Okay?
Sammy, so?
We are here today to discuss with you guys about the ordinance. The ordinance that's closing businesses at midnight that serve liquor. It's stated on record that it's considered a public nuisance for businesses to serve liquor after midnight. I'm a little bit perplexed by that, but we can get into that at a later time. Basically, why everyone's here is because we would like for you guys to see the faces and their children's faces and their spouses' faces of the people that will be affected by this ordinance. By our numbers, over 1,000 people will stand to lose their jobs, their livelihoods, if businesses close at midnight. Now, we've been told there's other ways to do things after midnight. Most of our businesses' profits are mainly taken in by liquor. We sell drinks, we are bars, we are late-night restaurants. Liquor is the main thing that brings in our revenue. So when that is taken away from us at those early hours, it's detrimental to our businesses. You might as well just close the doors of that. Most of our clubs, Sky 11, Club O, Structure, and a couple of the other businesses, we don't get busy till-
One minute left.
Okay, thank you. We don't get busy till around midnight. So basically, midnight at 1:00. So when we're shuttering our doors at midnight, most of our customers aren't even in the building. Usually have maybe about 40 or 50 people that are walking in. I'm not going to talk you guys ears off because actually you're going to hear from a lot of people and different perspectives about this today. So, thank you for your time, and I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of the backstory from part of the view. Thank you very much, everybody.
Up next is, I'll just say, Ms. Nicole, if that's okay?
I don't mean to destroy property.
Followed by Victor Woods.
Good evening, Aldermen, Alderwomen, Residents, Mayor. My name is Nicole Palmetier. I have been in the service industry as a bartender for going on 25 years. I live and work downtown until recently I was able to work for two wonderful black businessmen who run Club O. This industry has afforded me opportunities to buy real estate, travel, and otherwise set myself up for success. This is the first time I've had bosses who are black, and as a non-black person of color, I need to tell you how refreshing it is to have owners who actually care about their black staff and patrons. This is not something I am accustomed to in my 24 years of working in downtown Chicago, which is dominated by all-white ownership. Not only do the owners of Club O help support the men and women who work alongside with me, but they really care about their well-being. I am not trying to make this about race, but the contrast is stark. I was horrified when I learned how many clubs downtown have a quota system. They would tell the predominantly black doorstaff things like, "Make sure it doesn't get too dark in here." Finally, there is a space for black people and other people of color ran by black men and women who care about whether or not we are making enough money, because trust me when I say, that doesn't happen downtown. The mayor's proposal, and I hope he's alone in this, would essentially cut off our main income revenue stream. And for what? Last I checked, this wasn't church, it's not Sunday, and we are all whole-grown adults that can make our own decisions about what we do and how we do it. I don't understand why, as a black mayor, that you would set up an agenda to destroy black-owned businesses while simultaneously putting-
Alright! Alright! Woo! Thank you.
Now, we have Victor, Victor Woods, followed by Ms. Cynthia, I can't read the handwriting, but I want to hear it.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, I don't need the microphone. Good evening, and all the City Council Members and all the members that are here. Let me just first say, Mayor Clark, all of these people here represent jobs, and I'm going to address the elephant in the room. I mean, we talked about Jesus Christ, you did, and you talked about God. I would be remiss not to talk about the black girl that died in Harvey, that died. And the reason black children are dying all over Chicago and Harvey is because people don't have jobs, and there's no way that we can take the jobs away from all of these people who all have children. Raise your hand if you got a kid in school. We're going to fire these people from their jobs a month before Christmas. Now, we've had Floyd Mayweather come to Club O, and I'm an independent consultant for Club O, flown in by the management last night from Florida. I helped bring Floyd Mayweather to Harvey. He wouldn't have came here for any other reason but to enjoy Club O. These people pay taxes. We cannot stand to fire all these people and leave their children. This is why black children are dying all over the United States, because people don't have jobs, and we cannot do this to them and their children. So, I'm giving you, suggesting an other branch. I'm sorry to yell and get emotional, but I know that you must not have thought about this, Aldermen must not have thought about this, because I'm sure that if you look at all of these people here, that you would reconsider this. There's another way to go about it. And the elephant in the room, yes, it's a strip club. We all know that, let's talk about it. New York has strip clubs, California has strip clubs, Las Vegas has strip clubs, and downtown Chicago has strip clubs. So we got to find a way to deal with it. So in the name of common sense, and all the folks in suits who are dressed up, look at them! Look at all of these people here! And it is a damn shame that we can't get this many people in this room to represent the kids who are dying in Harvey. So all these people, I don't know you, make sure if you're important here in Harvey, that you go and knock on some doors and get the people in Harvey who have a best of interest in life to fill this room up for the death of children. Thank you, Victor. Thank you, Victor. And I want you to know, I have confidence in you, and I want all of you in this room to have confidence in him, because I don't believe that this mayor, after seeing all of you here, is going to stand up and close down the club. I'm doing thank you.
Next, Ms. Cynthia, followed by Ayesha Powell.
My last name is pronounced Whitemon, W-H-I-T-E-M-O-N, Cynthia Whitemon.
Thank you.
To the member of the diocese, to the Aldermen, to the staff, and the members in the audience. What about me? Mr. Mayor, what about me? I'm not a worker, I'm not employed at the lounge, but what I did do, I invested money last year into Sugar Baby Lounge. Why? Because my mother is 92 this, uh, next month, and all of her family, all of her family is coming here, Mr. Mayor, all of her family is coming into Chicago to celebrate her birthday. She is, she has been pronounced 10 years ago with dementia Alzheimer's. She's in her fourth stage. They're coming to celebrate her. Mr. Mayor, I started investing money into my mother's celebration. DJs have been paid, catering service has been paid, decoration service has been paid. All of this money has been invested prior to your ordinance. Mr. Mayor, why? Why 12 o'clock compared to 2? What does 2-hour difference make?
After Ayesha Powell is Janet Rogers.
Yeah, how you doing, Council Members, Mayor, Aldermen, everyone else? I know you know by now, all of us are here. I'm an inner-city guy, partner owns a house in Harvey since 1989, he's my uncle. Just as the young lady in the couple said, I used to do businesses and events for downtown for almost two decades. It was refreshing when we were able to do it in Harvey and do black-owned, black businesses because we do know Chicago is the most segregated city in the world. And all of Sky Box and all of the rest of these places, not until recently, have been able to manage. Some people own their properties, and it's black-owned. So it's probably right now the most black-owned or managed entertainment ever been in South Suburb, in East South Suburb, which is refreshing. And we don't believe that when the ordinance was passed, we don't think you did it out of mission, we just would appreciate it before you affect 40-something businesses, that you would at least come talk to the businesses. You know what I'm saying? Because even if it's violence, whatever it is, we all can do better. But we at Club O, just speaking for us, we can operate for 10 or 12 hours. We only want to operate for 5 hours. A normal 9 to 5 is 8 hours. We don't even want to operate for 8 hours. We only want to operate for 5 hours. And we purposely, when we took over Club O, we killed the day shift. Didn't want any type of adult entertainment while school's going on. We purposely stopped it, we stopped that reference, and we really operated as a nightclub. We just want to operate our layouts, particularly on the weekdays. I'm just speaking for us. We understand the week, the weekdays and everything else. We've always said we would want law enforcement to do our security, because we in Harvey can do it better than anybody else. You know, and we don't, we didn't come here to bash anyone, just like everyone is saying, all these people affected by this, I know maybe people don't know. We have real money, a lot of money, tied up in Club O. We've invested in Harvey. We don't just get paid from Harvey, we've invested in Harvey, a lot of money, and we want to do more investment in Harvey. So we just hopefully can come to a negotiation. We know we have to work with the Council. We appreciate you, we just want you to hear our side of the story, to move forward, how we all could help each other, but cutting particularly our club off at 12 is a death sentence. That's just is what it is.
30 seconds?
And we hoping that we don't, you know, let it come then. And I'm just about to show hands, how many everybody here work for the club, or have people work for the club? Is that main job? And this is really what it is. It's definitely for me. You know, so we just want a negotiation on how we can come to a compromise, that's all. Thank you.
And then we have Janet Rogers, followed by Terrance Galan.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janet Rogers. I didn't come to talk about the strip club, but since I'm here, I think I might say a couple of things. Praying along. Listen. I don't go to strip clubs, I don't drink, and I don't knock anybody else for what they do. I do understand that we need to tax dollars, and I'm going to ask the Aldermen and the Mayor to reconsider, because I do understand, how are we going to pay the taxes? I have one house in Harvey that my son, that I pretty out, and I pay $3,000 a year for taxes for that particular property. If we lose the tax dollars from the strip club, then you going to put that on me? I don't think so. I don't think so. What I do say, my husband tell me not to cut up, but I have to say what I got to say. You run your thing, and I run mine. All I'm saying is, then let's reconsider, let's think about what we're doing before we do it. And if you have another place to get the tax dollars from, then tell the citizens, because I don't want to pay it, just like nobody else here. I understand what they paying at the liquor stores, what they paying at the strip clubs and every place else. If they don't buy it here, they going every place else to buy it. So it don't make, it don't make any difference about you selling it here as long as it's under control. My name is, I came to ask a question about the Community Center. As the School Board President, Harvard School District 152, we open our school doors for quite a few. We employ 400 people, which is the largest employee in the City of Harvey, the school district. But we need that Community Center open. I spoke with the Mayor about it. When he first took office, I know he was busy getting things arranged. I made an offer to the Mayor, and I bring it to the City Council, that I, along with several other people, would get together and try to bring it back, put the 501(c)(3) back, and no cost to the City of Harvey, and put it back into business, so our kids and our seniors will have a place to go in Harvey. They're all over the place asking to go in other towns, Ms. Thomas can say, they have no place to go. So we need to do something about that Community Center that's sitting over there with chains and locks on. I know you said it wasn't a priority, but children are a priority to me. I raise both of my children in Harvey, both of my children are currently deceased, but I am still, thank you for that time, Mayor. I am still pushing for the City of Harvey, and I don't plan to go anywhere, because my house is upside down. So I tell you something, let's do something about the taxes in Harvey, let's get that Community Center open. You Aldermen are sitting here talking about dogs and-
There you go.
-hiring economic development people, let's do something for the kids, let's get that Community Center open. And I am ready to assist at no charge with several other people, and getting it back. So it's not going to cost you any money like we cost you all this.
I know that's right. I know that's right.
Please, we have, transfer line, and then up next is Margaret O'Neill.
My name is John Hamilton, speaker on behalf of Club O. I'm not a public speaker, so bear with me. Well, I'm from Harvey. I ran these streets of Harvey, Club O gave me a sign, took me off the streets. I turned around, and I'm the manager of Harvey's Club O. I'm a black man with 100-plus black employees, and y'all trying to take that from me. I give to the city Sergeant Armstrong, the Harvey Police Department. I raised $22,000 for his, for his kids' program. The kid that got killed over there on 140th Center right off of the street, that was your kid. I paid for that funeral out of my pocket, to Sergeant Armstrong. Center Street, I paid for that out of my pocket, not none of y'all. So y'all trying to take from us. You know, I, I bought a thousand bucks for the City of Harvey for Christmas, I bought a thousand book bags for these kids. Y'all coming in this city trying to take what we didn't, more is our life on. My house, my kids' tuition, everything, I put everything, blood, sweat, and this, and y'all trying to take this from us. Y'all didn't, y'all didn't even come talk to us. I've been in Harvey 35-plus years, my brothers brought this life to these streets. You know what I mean? Y'all trying to take this from us. I just don't understand how a black man don't want to take away these jobs from black people. I just don't understand it, for the life of me. And I don't know if y'all thought this through, y'all just think about these strip clubs and nightclubs. Now, we do right, we, 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 we employ the unemployable. You know, some of y'all kids or cousins probably work for me. You know, I'm giving everybody a fair shot, minus pedophiles, but anything, I'm giving everybody a fair shot. Man, can we please reconsider this? And I personally, this is about money, I would personally take 50,000, write you a check, donate it to the after-school program for these kids, fix up the Community Center.
Margaret O'Neill, followed by Kelvin Moore.
My name is Margaret O'Neill. I'm an indigenous Aboriginal person who was here on the authority of God, Creator of existence, the Holy Spirit, and his forgotten son, along with the supreme law of the land, which is the Constitution of the United States of America and this republic. I am here only by the grace of God, who has blessed me with the job at Sky 11 and Club O respectively. I work with the best bosses like Gigi, Big John, Dooz, Joel, Kenny, Doc, and all my coworkers who are here tonight. I love all of y'all. And I've, I've never worked with this many great people in my life, and I'm 44 years old. I am a single father whose sole purpose in this life is to take care of my daughter. Trinity O'Neill, stand up. All I do in life, that's it, is love. These businesses help provide for our families, so from the bottom of my soul's heart, please keep us and allow us to provide for our families and for ourselves. I'm going to read you something else, sir. I am the way, the truth, the light, the creation, unparalleled, unequal salvation. I'm impotent, transcendent, infinite, me coming back to the earth around the corner, infinite. Strength and power remains everlasting. Nothing is above me, I'm overstanding. The God of all gods, beginning and ending, I made the universe, always extended, roles of Sharon, fruits of David. I see and know all, because of that, I'm hating. I will provide, I'm the great redeemer.
One minute left.
You can't get to where I am unless you a believer. The first fruits, son of God, son of man, everything is destiny, a perfect plan, glorified by the angels, I sacrifice, so you can have eternal life, Jesus Christ. He said, "He will never leave us, he will never forsake us." Please keep that in mind, and in your hearts while y'all have to make y'all decisions. I pray y'all make the right decision, for not only for me, but for everybody else who's here, and everybody else who's not here. God bless y'all.
Next, Kelvin Moore, and then finally Diamond Corr.
My name is Marvin O'Neil. I'm an indigenous Aboriginal person who was here on the authority of God. Creator of existence, the Holy Spirit, and his forgotten son. Along with the supreme law of the land, which is the Constitution of the United States of America and this republic. I am here only by the grace of God, who has blessed me with the job at Sky 11 and Club O respectfully. I work with the best bosses like Gigi, Big, Big John, Dooz, Joel, Kenny, Doc, and all my coworkers who are here tonight. I love all y'all. And I've, I've never worked with this many great people in my life, and I'm forty-four years old. I am a single father who's sole purpose in this life is to take care of my daughter. Trinity O'Neil, stand up. All I do in life, that's it, is up. These businesses help provide for our families, so from the bottom of my soul's heart, please, keep us and allow us to provide for our families and for ourselves. I'm gonna read you something else, sir. I am the way, the truth, the light, the creation. Unparalleled, unequal salvation. I'm impotent, transcendent, infinite. Me coming back to the earth around the corner, infinite. Strength and power remains everlasting. Nothing is above me, I'm overstanding. The God of all gods, beginning and ending. I made the universe, always extending. Rose of Sharon, fruit of David. I see and know all, because of that, I'm hating. I will provide, I'm the great redeemer.
One minute left.
You can't get to where I am unless you a believer. The first fruits, son of God, son of man. Everything is destiny, a perfect plan. Glorified by the angels, I sacrifice, so you can have eternal life, Jesus Christ. He said he will never leave us, he will never forsake us. Please keep that in mind, and in your hearts while y'all have to make y'all decisions. I pray y'all make the right decision, for not only for me, but for everybody else who's here, and everybody else who's not here. God bless y'all.
Next, uh, is Kelvin Moore, and then finally Diamond Cog.
I forgot who I'm telling everybody, I'm telling the councilmen, mayor, speakers, Aldermen. But look, now they know my real name. I'm promoting, I'm promoting, I done promoted downtown Chicago. I reported really over the whole city, but when I came to Harvey, I made a lot of money at Harvey. And I paid some taxes too in Harvey, too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I'm just speaking off behind the bus, promoters, uh, the workers, bar girls, bartenders, everybody. Bar backs, everybody. We gonna really be affected, we will be affected by this 12 o'clock shutdown, like, cuz I gotta move on daily. So when I see that 12 o'clock, I say, whoa, whoa, that's for all the people coming to the club. About 12 o'clock, man, I'm like, I'm gonna lose my record. I didn't work at SFL Lounge, Sky 11, Club O. I didn't work in the whole city of Harvey. And respectfully, they looked out for me and took care of my family out of that downtown Chicago, now I'm out here. It really hurt though, cuz like, if you do shut it down, what we gonna do? What we all gonna do? What the kids gonna do? What the people of Harvey gonna do? We don't want nobody out here robbing us of killer, cuz you can't make no money no more. So, if, if you keep a job, keep people employed, we good enough. Now, we understand about the 12 o'clock, the liquor, and, and I wanna stop the crime. The liquor's not the problem. The liquor's not the problem, it's not a problem at all. The club's not the problem. It's what's going on in the, in the communities before the club. They come to the club to chill, relax, take it out their mind. They go back out to field, ain't no jobs. So, we need this, I'm telling you, we need this. Period, it's us. Everybody here that work at the clubs, make some noise. Our Aldermen and Mayor, respectfully.
One minute left.
We like that you came, you got this job. But do right at us, we gonna do right back at you. We gonna show up, we gonna, after-school program, we gonna show up. We showed it today. We gonna show up and help, we gonna clean neighborhoods up. We wanna invest in that some properties, and we could, I just hold up on page three, I wanna, I wanna back. But, we need to, we need to talk to them, let them know what's going on, so we can help, that's it.
Diamond Cog.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diamond. I'm currently a bartender at Club O. Um, working at the, at Sky 11. I personally know Dooz and Big John over a decade. Uh, they gave me an opportunity by working at Club O. I have put myself through college, I graduated in May. I had the opportunity. I'm in the process of opening up a daycare center. Taking this revenue, taking this job, changing things up, and such short notice, will affect me tremendously. I'm trying to do something positive, you know what I mean, in my life, as well as many other people that's employed here. I'm a single mother of three, twelve, nine, and one years old. Club O gave me an opportunity to take care of my daughter on maternity leave without working, you know what I mean? And it's just like, we're gonna be affected tremendously by this decision, if you all gonna reconsider. I personally don't think that closing a liquor store and a club at 12 o'clock will keep the crime down. Club O's one of the safest places I ever worked, I felt like that. Never had a problem, never had an issue. We have tight security, they look out for everybody. If they, if you close the liquor stores down at 12 o'clock, they just gonna go to golf, run to the hill. Caddyman Park, Caddyman City.
Exactly.
They still gonna drink.
Exactly.
They just gonna go somewhere else to get you. If you close us down at 12 o'clock, that's gonna be more kickbacks, more house parties, situations that set up that don't have security, that it's, it's out of control, to them what it's about. Please reconsider. We need our jobs, I need my job, thank you for that, we're asking you, please.
Chair recognizes the Alderman of the sixth ward.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, amend the agenda to, uh, discuss the reversal of the 12 o'clock liquor laws.
Are we having a meeting tomorrow? Uh, uh, a meeting tomorrow regarding that? Is there a meeting tomorrow? I'm sorry?
Yes, Public Safety is going to meet.
There's a public, there's a Public Safety meeting tomorrow, actually, to discuss, um, this particular ordinance at 5:00 p.m.
Meeting's 5:00 p.m. tomorrow, Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, Public Safety Committee is discussing tomorrow, could we hold that till then? Uh, Alderman?
We can.
Thank you. Yes, to be clear, there is a meeting tomorrow at 5:00 p.m., here at City Council Chambers. And on that agenda is discussion of, uh, this particular ordinance, in which, uh, Alderman of the sixth ward referenced. So at that particular point in time, that all of you show back up, we would love to see you, and we can discuss this a little bit more. Oh, oh, here it is.
Believe in you, Mayor!
Yes. I'm not gonna take credit for, um, imposing the ordinance, and I'm not gonna take credit for this discussion. It's been the work of Alderman that has really done this, and that's who the people, that's who the department should go to. Uh, we are all wanting to work together a little bit in time, but to be clear, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, at 5:00 p.m., here at 15320 Broadway Avenue, near across Harvey, Illinois. Uh, and all that is the, um, discussion of the city of Harvey ordinance, thirty-three seventy-six hours of operation for liquor sale. So that is the time we will have more discussion on that issue. He says that that was fine, uh, the chair recognizes the Alderman of the first ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand it's short notice, and I myself have been on the tally, so, with the meeting tomorrow, would it be also possible if we can hear the controller actually provide us with the tax dollars from midnight and after? Uh, how much actually is?
The, the request, the request was for the controller, uh, a member of the mayor's office, to be present to answer any questions, address any concerns. Not, not that we haven't been fully vouched on these particular questions, but I thought it would be better to have those, uh, as you said, to, to be present. Yes, I have made a request, I don't know, I don't know, it's not gonna make it, I don't care.
Well, you will, you will have.
Good, Charlie. Yes, I, I was, because, you know, from my understanding in the past, between the actual tax dollars from the liquor sales, because most of them are coming in and paying a cover charge that they don't pay tax on the cover charge, I could be wrong, and that's why I, I will be at your meeting tomorrow, and I...
Please, I mean, I reserve that for, for the meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, because I don't know that, aren't taxed on the cover charge.
And also, and also, um, even though I have not talked to any of the club owners, I did ask them, some of them, okay, that question regarding the taxes. So if they can bring additional information, that may help to provide us more clarity as far as what their books say regarding the amount of taxes they pay to the city of Harvey.
I mean, I think that's the goal, that's why I...
Okay. Now, if we, um, next on the agenda, new business. Five, they approve of minutes dated September ninth and sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. The floor would entertain a motion. Alderman at the hall. If there is any of our, uh, attendees that would like to leave at this time, we're gonna give you minutes. All right. Thank you so much for your pictures. Item five eight, approve of minutes dated September ninth and sixteen, two thousand nineteen, Chair would entertain a motion.
Second.
Move by six.
This is what?
Yeah, we'll prove the minutes. No, you know, no.
No, no.
Yeah, sworn in.
No, minutes from September ninth.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna make this easier. We will do first the minutes for September ninth, two thousand nineteen, the chair would entertain a motion. Now, move by six, second by first, but would the police call roll?
Alderman Jermenski, yes. Alderman Cruda?
Yes.
Alderman Randall L.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers, yes. Alderman Talbot?
No.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have approval of minutes dated September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, Chair would entertain a motion.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion by the, motion by the first ward, second by the sixth, uh, Chair recognizes the Alderman of the second ward.
So, there's a little particular minute, uh, there, how the, as long as there's one person spoke to hold meeting, that would do.
Is there something that you'd like added to the, to the minutes? Okay, so what would you like added to the minutes?
We should technically give a little more detail, someone, because only thing, it was in that meeting, the, the, called order, the agreement, nothing else. I mean, much longer than that.
Then I understand. So, because we won't know exactly what it is, it's satisfaction.
No, the moment is something unique, so maybe something about the slide, a moment of conversation, so you might have reference back to the minutes, uh, for creation of a resolution, sorry, we need that one, because they're not, they don't provide any of that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. The Chair recognizes the Alderman of the fifth ward.
Yes, I, I have a kind of agreement, the, uh, just giving example, um, the, the minutes just doesn't reflect, I understand they don't have to be verbatim, but some of the key things that were discussed at this meeting, like, um, the discussion on how items would be put on the agenda. This is completely, it just says Alderman Randall, like this one says Alderman Randall L. And Key and Rogers as council, how they supposed to get items on the agenda? Who do we ask that to? And what was their response? It just jumps to a home, it's just...
Yes, yes, Alderman, and that's what I'm talking about. So if you can give us a little, at least a little bit more clarity as far as what you want, then we can make the minutes, make sure that's added, at least complete the talk. At least complete the talk.
Uh, on some of those conversations, like if you mention the conversation, you, you should complete the talk, so that if somebody recommends, they understand what was accomplished in that, in that conversation.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Wait, um, did he actually, I believe, got the floor, Alderman of the sixth ward?
Uh, this, this was the meeting where we, when we had the little shout, we, we came, yeah, okay, I understand now.
Yeah, I, I didn't understand the first slide, but it's like, you looked at, and saw what it stated, um, Alderman of the first ward.
Well, I was just commenting, I thought, because I read that too, with, um, with, uh, Alderman Randall, and then I was wondering what I thought. Carrie Lynn was the one, yes, to go to the mayor first. She was conducting the, so she answered that question.
But it's not in the minutes.
Yeah, it says right here, then Carrie and, uh, Carrie Lynn responded. So, I mean, and that's right, I don't know, am I right? It, it just went, the open meetings broke off, and then the public participation, and then it went into, um... What, what, what I see, actually, I do see what the Aldermen are saying, it should have been her presentation a little bit more detailed.
Very much so.
Yeah, that's, I can see, but to answer your question, it wasn't him that she resigned, like, in more detail.
Let, let me, uh, maybe, maybe if I could refresh your memory, if you recall, I asked, I'm sorry.
Alderman of the fifth ward.
When, when I, when I, when we asked the question for, uh, putting together a, uh, presidential, uh, ordinance, about how I'd be placed on the agenda, the general consensus from councils that it would require, uh, three signatures from the Alderman, uh, put in written form, like, we had that complete discussion, none of that's here, nothing's here.
Now, that's true.
So, yes, Alderman of the second.
Carrie Lynn asked her, that she could make an ordinance about the agenda, but she didn't want it back. She gave the government, the community lost their business investment, they was going for a main job, and they decided to pull back because of the, the fight, right? That's what Carrie Lynn responded after that story. Then it goes to say Alderman Rogers agreed with the ordinance, that he...
There was some stuff in between.
Yeah, I agree, I, I, I think, uh, it's, uh...
So, are we withdrawing the motions, and?
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Or we just gonna table this, what are we going to do?
I'm withdrawing, I say.
Yeah, I agree with, um...
All right.
So, I think the motion be tabled.
There you go, thank you. Motion ta, uh, motion tabled.
Um, you're the one?
Yes, we are.
Who motioned to table?
That was one, and who was the second?
One and five.
One and five. Or please call roll.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Randall L?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Cruda?
Yes.
Alderman Jermenski?
Yes.
And Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Motion carried, um, minutes for September sixteenth will be tabled.
Well, thank you. Next, ours is five B, approval of bills for payment dated October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to table committee?
Okay, there's a motion to send the committee by the second ward, second by the sixth. Or the police call roll.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Randall L?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Cruda?
Yes.
Alderman Jermenski?
Yes.
And Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Motion carried, send, um, the bills for payments to committee, to the finance committee?
Finance committee.
Chair recognizes the Alderman of the first ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. Is there any way we can have a committee meeting prior to, um, City Council? To have, uh, the bills automatically, by, uh, the finance committee?
I'm pretty sure we can figure that out.
I mean, I think if you wanna do a schedule, the finance committee prior to the regular meeting.
Well, I think, uh, without that, the finance chair, so...
I would, I would, I would be in favor of that.
But I think this is...
Where does the committee go to the committee before the committee?
Yes, I, I...
Sounds like a good idea, and we'll work on making that happen. I think it's the Chair recognizes the Alderman of the third ward.
Uh, may I ask, what, the, the previous month, uh, that we had such a long gap? I think we're missing a bills list for, uh, for all, uh...
In last committee?
Yeah, but we had, the meeting was canceled, the next meeting was canceled, because they were doing the floors, and we never brought it back up.
Okay, um, at least I'm getting a nod that, that happened. Okay, so we have to break that one up too?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want us to not pay any bills.
I really enjoy, you guys, let's keep this going this way. Really enjoy this. Um, so yes, we'll, um, we'll have, we'll make sure that August is in there, uh, as well. Uh, now to new business five C ordinance, brothers and sisters of Harvey. ordinance three three eight five, ordinance for the amendment to the current existing council enterprise zone, subsequent to the Enterprise Act, uh, of the state of Illinois.
I made the motion that we accept ordinance thirty three eighty five.
Second.
Motion by the first ward, second by the third. Chair recognizes Alderman from the second ward.
Mayor, could you perhaps might explain this to the public, what is it?
Well, Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams explained it to me earlier today, so pellicantly, why don't you?
We're simply adding some fans to the existing enterprise zones, not going to affect the city of Harvey in any way, there's three other communities who are, are expanding the enterprise zone, and we just need all members of the enterprise zone to have to pass the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair would entertain the motion. Yes, we have a motion, one and three, okay, um, but please call her on.
Alderman Cruda?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Randall L?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Jermanski?
Yes.
And Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Motion carried, ordinance thirty three eighty five is passed.
Thank you. Uh, next is the ordinance, a resolution, excuse me, two nine zero two, a resolution of the city of Harvey, Cook County, Illinois, authorizing a special event, Hands Across Harvey for the city of Harvey. Uh, this particular event is an event to come together for unity, and against violence in the city of Harvey. We have seen some, some acts within our city, uh, it's actually something that I would say that, that we thought should happen much sooner than now. But we're going to come together and create a, basically, a human chain from hundred fifty ninth Wood Street to a hundred and fifty ninth Low. For those who are not sure where Low is located, it's just a few blocks east of Houston. We are going to come together at that time, um, in unity and against violence in this particular, uh, community. We're trying to show people that we can take a stand, and we can take a stand together in unity and against violence. Uh, after that, there will be a rally, um, at Pontiff Cathedral, which is on a hundred fifty ninth and Lincoln, uh, as well, there will be food, entertainment, and, and fun, and we will actually party in peace. So, we're hoping that everyone will, uh, participate, if you want to register, because we would like to register, if you can, um, you can go to handsacrossharvey.org, um, let's get handsacrossharvey.org, and you can sign up to register at that, uh, website address. We need this resolution in order to, uh, be able to block off the south worship, uh, uh, one lane of a hundred and fifty ninth street for this particular event, and we would need for the, um, council to approve it.
Motion to approve, resolution twenty nine, October.
October twenty sixth, two thousand nineteen, starting at ten o'clock. Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, there's flies on the counter outside, we'll make sure you all have one as well, when you leave. I got a motion to approve, who was it, to approve? Motion by the fifth ward, and second by the sixth. Claire, would you please call her on?
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Cruda?
Yes.
Alderman Randall L?
Yes.
Alderman Jermanski?
Yes.
And Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Motion carried, passed.
Thank you. Next. Next on the agenda is, uh, resolution two nine zero three, a resolution establishing an intergovernmental agreement between Cook County on behalf of Cook County Sheriff and the city of Harvey, Cook County, Illinois. This is specifically, this particular ordinance specifically deals with our dispatch services from our police department here in the city of Harvey. Uh, in the five months that I've been in the office so far, I've, I've heard a variety of concerns regarding, uh, dispatch, and I have the police not showing up within a adequate period of time. And so, we've been able to get to the bottom of some of our issues, maybe not all of them, but some of them. And that comes to, uh, our dispatch services. We are trying to take our current dispatch and do an intergovernmental agreement with Cook County Sheriff's Office, allowing them to take over our dispatch service and to provide, I would hope, a better service. But what I would do first is, uh, I would present to the council and the audience, Mr. Martin Bennett, who is, um, the emergency communications, uh, for the Cook County Sheriff's Police, and also, of course, our, uh, chief of police, Eddie Winters. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with everyone, I just would like to talk about some of the technology that the Cook County Sheriff's Office will bring to Harvey. Um, two of the big things that we have is, uh, Smart nine one one, and we also have Rave Alert. This will give citizens the ability to register online, provide critical information to nine one one dispatchers. It's a free service that we pay for, that's offered to the residents. Residents can basically load a Smart nine one one profile, they can upload photos of children, uh, vehicles, their pets, uh, they can put any information they want to put in that nine one one profile. When they dial nine one one, and an operator answers the phone, all that information will pop up. Uh, typically, right now, what happens is, if someone makes a nine one one call, we get their callback number, and we get their carrier, we get no personal information about them. It's something that shaves minutes off of nine one one calls, that will ultimately help the citizen to get better service. Um, some of the other programs that we have is Rapid SOS, which is, uh, location information for nine one one calls. We're actually able to pinpoint some of the people within thirty feet of where they're calling from, helpful when people are traveling on different roadways, and are not paying attention to where they're at, and they're involved in a car accident. Uh, some of the other technology that we have is Uber Connect, if someone dials nine one one from Uber, and it comes to us, we get all the Uber information in that nine one one call, and we also have wearable technologies, for example, if someone has an Apple Smartwatch, the Apple Smartwatch calls us, we get that information, and we're able to pass that along to the first responders. Um, the centers of, we've invested approximately four million dollars in the center in the past five years. Um, that technology will, um, be afforded to the city of Harvey at no cost, no buying cost for it. Uh, we've done this for all the communities that we serve, um, both in, uh, north suburbs, south suburbs, and it's a win-win situation to bring this technology to citizens of Harvey. Are there any additional questions that I can answer about the services that we offer?
Yeah, I have one, uh, you mentioned this, uh, this nine one one emergency registry, is that like an app you can put on your phone or something to automatically get to nine one one? And would you say registry, when you call nine one one, they will automatically know how many city members you have, and they don't have all that information already, if you've registered?
That's correct, so a splash screen will come up for the dispatcher, and then all that information will be present there. Recently, the city of Chicago launched Smart nine one one also, so you see a number of suburbs that have already joined Smart nine one one, and it's a program that is, uh, you know, um, something that's extremely helpful, especially if you have a missing child or something like that, when you're dialing nine one one. You can load that profile information, load pictures of your family members, um, let's say you have an at-risk senior that lives at your residence, that walks away, and you can, um, have a photo uploaded, when you call, report that to us, that senior, we can send a photo to the officers that are responding, and give them that information, and, uh, with the Rapid SOS information, it's all next generation nine one one, and all the technology that's coming there already there.
Thank you. Alderman from the first ward.
Are your nine one one operators viable?
Yes, uh, so, our nine one one operators, um, speak about five different languages, but we also use a language line services, so if it is a language that we're, um, challenged with, we can really do any type of language.
I have another question for Chief Winters. Yeah, our existing Harvey nine one one, those, uh, those personnel that's from the Harvey Police Department, will they be replaced or reused in a different capacity?
Yeah, that's the plan right now, uh, right now, we still have openings in other sections of the department, so I plan to start reviewing those folks, just to try to.
Nobody's going to be laid off, anything like that?
No, that's not the intention.
Okay.
And for the record, it's not my intention either. Um, we're trying to, we're trying to make our departments bigger and better, so they can serve us more. But it would be so kind, um, Alderman and Winters, to take a look at your very first, if you open up your, um, file here, and you look under the sentences, and you just take a look at the very first sentence. I don't know, you tell me what it says, Alderman. So, once again, um, Chief, would you also address, or, or Mr. Bennett, whichever, uh, address what it's costing us now versus how much we can save over a period of time?
So, currently, the, uh, fiscal twenty seventeen was four hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-four. Um, one of the things that that doesn't include is some of the different equipment, um, if the city decided to keep the nine one one center open, um, you'd have to replace the radio system, and upgrade the phone system and the CAD system, those are capital improvements that are not included in those numbers, that are improvements that are already at the county that we already have.
Those improvements would cost us over a million dollars to, to do that.
I'm aware of that, I just wanted to see what he was going to say.
Motion that we accept, resolution.
I'll just get that question.
So, you still have questions? It seems to be free.
So, so basically, what's, what's happening here is, um, because I think, I think these gentlemen are being a little modest, and how they're presenting it to you guys, um, besides the savings, bottom line is our current system, and, and I've explained this openly because I want some of the residents to understand why it is that you've been getting some of the service you have when you call nine one one. We have analog for all the phone lines, is there anybody in this, in this audience that has an analog phone line in their house?
Exactly, exactly, let's talk. But, yes, yes, Chief. And I'm just asking a question, how many of you all have called nine one one? How many of you all have gotten a busy signal, no answer, or the calls went straight to voicemail, and, and right? Okay, which time, which is coming to twenty first?
And we're, and we're not, I'll be two seconds, I'll be there, uh, the Alderman fifth ward. You didn't, you didn't, you didn't raise your hand, I'll, I'll be there in the fifth ward. I mean, I, I, no problem, but he did raise his hand, I saw it first.
Uh, Spock, I really have, because I'm also a statement, um, I think that, um, first of all, I want to say it's not the, one of the first times that we, that I've seen this article before, and, um, I really support this article for any other benefit that I do know is not there. Um, just in my short time, I, I really do prefer to have an opportunity to really look at something, like, this is like the first time that we really even had this information presented before, um, just so that we are aware and, and really read it and go through it, and actually look at it. Um, and that's just for me, I find that it's better when, I feel like we've made mistakes in the past with the volume, I think, for the first time you look at it.
Yeah.
And, and I would prefer to have the opportunity to properly actually read this, this pamphlet, because I've been asked for something similar to, to this, and then come and vote on it, versus just vote on it the first time that we see it.
Okay, um, you did have the, the government agreement though, right? You did have this, right?
Yes, sir, and, and just so you know, just so you know, we have that along with, and, and this is not just for, you know, the public to understand it, but also you as well, we, we get this stuff on Friday, you know, Friday, pretty much nightly. And in this case, we had one, two, three, four, five, six different ordinances to read through and digest, and then come in and say yes or no to, in all respects, or, that's really not even enough time. So, you know, I, again, and on the surface, some of these things I supported in the past as, as, uh, uh, the president of the union, because I understood the aspect of it, especially with nine one one, I think at the time, the current mayor was using like e-comm or something like that, but, I, I get it, but I, I do think that it's wise to just take time and actually read the information, and then vote on it.
I, I want you to, Alderman first, but before we go there, yes, and so you get them on Friday, and there's been times where the council has gotten the packets on Wednesday, and it still didn't change the outcome.
I, 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 unfortunately, I do not represent the council, just myself in this matter, and, and so, I'm just saying, getting them Friday, and then getting them Monday, when you have six of them, is a lot, if it's one or two, I get it.
I, I understand, I understand, and thank you so much, Alderman. Uh, Alderman, Chair recognizes the Alderman from the second.
Yeah, I agree with, with Alderman, uh, sending this, uh, blanks, and giving us time to vote this, could you just send this? Well, I just got this piece here, but I figured my fact is, this morning, uh, I had to make it up to the office for five o'clock on Friday, and then evening, for some reason, I wanted to put it up, but nonetheless, I have made mistakes, but I would, uh, not been able to pull it better, and then some of the serious is this, reading the first line, maybe have questions for the attorney, uh, that I would like to ask, and, see, I think something like this should be sent to them, even though it sounds like candy to the residents, not all of the students.
Alderman, Alderman from the first ward. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, Alderman from the sixth ward.
Uh, Mayor, uh, just to echo the, the comments of, of Alderman, when we receive, uh, an email on Friday evening, we get it on this little bitty, uh, telephone, and it's pretty difficult to read it, um, via telephone, you know, you're trying to get all these resolutions and stuff, and bills and everything, and, uh, every, every form of, of local government that I'm familiar with, for our South Florida College, and Harvey School District one fifty-two, uh, Harvey Laker Board, and, uh, Harvey School District, what's this for, one forty-seven, they always have them delivered. Now, that's something that you might want to consider in the future, is just delivering a paper copy on Friday as opposed to trying to email it, because we've worked on this laptops, which we never received, now, it would be a little more easier to read it on a laptop than trying to read it on this phone, and then, I don't have accessibility to a copying machine until Monday morning. So, I'm trying to digest all this information on Monday to get ready for the meeting at seven o'clock. No disrespect, I spoke with Mr. Williams in regards to it, and he thought it was a good idea, I think it's a good idea, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think it's a good idea, we just want to do.
Yes, actually, and, and while everyone may have, have their reasons, everything that we need is in the, um, actual, um, resolution, the intergovernment agreement. My question is, if we delay this, if we delay this, that means we cannot implement this procedure until we vote on it, and it may be two to three weeks, it may even be another month. month. Now, that may not be a concern anymore, but we also know what our current situation is. Now, whether you want your package earlier, whether you see it off a little bitty phone, I, you know, all I know is that if I ever had any questions, I'd vote. And maybe if I'm special, then it's Olivia, but Mr. Mayor, you have always answered my calls. And if I have a question to Mr. Williams, Sunday night, pick up a phone, ask him what's going on. And I'm not making excuses, but I know certain things, like the 911 is something that's very detrimental to our city. That's my opinion.
Um, thank you.
I just want to, certainly not to comment on the necessity of reviewing the documents on a timely basis and stuff, but I do want to reiterate that the 911, I've been here over five years as the control person. And I would tell you, one of the big concerns has been the 911 system, because it's very expensive. Like, there's analog, and I mean, I'll give you a case, we talk about analog phones, you can really think about, I think it's myself, you know, while we stick your finger in and running around and that type of thing. Digital phones are, the digital is so important, and they alluded to that, is, I only got to say this, I feel often, we get money from the state in the 911 program, which is basically ongoing toward paying the cost of this, we use the subs-911. They expect you to be able to break down the type of calls you get, how many cellular calls you get, how many text messages you get. Obviously, it's like, you can't receive a text message on your home phone, and you don't know what's happening, that's the way people do it, people like to be anonymous, or they'd rather send a text message to say to you. Our system just doesn't have the capability to do that. And I think City Commissioner Williams came back and said a billion dollars, I think more than that, to implement a digital system with all the things. Now, I mentioned the 911 reports that we required problems on a casualty basis, they asked us for this information, and it's only by the grace of God they still fund us because we can ask them. I can only say, we received 1,1091 calls, they won't know how many were, they're digitized in nature, how many were digital, how many were text messages, but just being able to comply with this stuff, and also I'll add this to this other people protection of the city, because what happens is, when things happen, and we don't have the information, we get sued. So, what did the call made, what type of call was it, how did it derive, what number did it derive from, we don't have that information. So this, this really is vital, and there's some savings to us, because obviously we don't have to bag equipment over, but there's some savings to us long-term. I don't want to profess the practice law and take all the legal implications of it, but it's, it really is important that we, as far as I'm concerned, I mentioned this to Mayor Kellaw three years ago, that we should consider outsourcing this, because we just don't have the information. So, again, it's certainly not the, diminish the necessity of delivering all this information, but I want you guys to understand, this is important, this is stepping out of the arms way. Thank you, Mayor.
Just one last point, though, if we can look at page two, there is a termination clause, after three months, you go out and reconvene and then make a decision if this is something that you feel was best for the city at that point, but understand that another day could be a 911 call that doesn't come through, and that could be someone's life.
Alderman, the fifth floor.
Yes, sir, and all due respect, if you want to take the next 10, 15 minutes to answer the questions that I haven't really seen through, I have no point in voting, no problem with voting on it, and also, with that being said, I just wanted to respect our procedures that we have here, and that's why I always said that, and I'm saying, I mean, the goal is not to go into lengthy discussions to relate each point, and so that's why I was saying that. But if you really want to extend the time and ask all the questions, I have no problem with that, I think that goes involved, you know, votes are a central part of the time, but that's what it's at for me. I'm just not, I'm looking, I'm just reading this, you know, like literally, in my hand right now. And it just, come on.
Okay, let me, let me, Alderman of the sixth floor.
You know, I'm, I'm all in favor of entering to the 21st century, I do think the smart man, I like the idea, I think it's gonna be great for our citizens, and I'm always gonna be proactive when it comes to citizen party. As the chief so eloquently put it, nobody, no employees were gonna be made off, as well as you, Mayor, you said you want to keep everybody in this department, and that was mainly my main concern, that we're unable to go from 67 dispatchers from seven to 67, okay, from eight-hour shifts to, from 12-hour shifts to eight-hour shift, you know, it just makes sense that we constitute this a bringer job here, so I'm, I like it.
So, um, before I, before I continue, I want to know if anyone else other than Alderman Randall Hill had any other questions or concerns?
No, I think it should be sent to the committee so we can vet it out.
So, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to respond to Alderman Randall Hill regarding his questions or concerns. Before I do, I just want to, see, I'm confused as the, as the, as the, the now leader of this community, I get confused because I hear some people talk about the importance of safety, I hear some people talk about the importance of children, I hear some people complain about the fact that they don't get the 911 call answered at all. Now, by the time that this particular item goes, say for instance, to a committee, and I wouldn't push this hard on, but by the time this goes to the committee, eventually makes it to a meeting, and eventually comes back, there's gonna be a lot of lives in between that time. Now, as long as this council is willing to wear that badge of honor, send it to committee, as long as you're willing to say that something happens between now and then, that you're willing to accept that, and send it to committee, because I don't understand, I get it, first of all, being an Alderman and being in the position, and getting this stuff in Friday at 4:30 on Monday, you know, yeah, we have to work to do better, and I know that we can, but I know there's been Aldermen before us, before me, before Alderman West, Alderman West, before Alderman Key, that got their packets on Friday at 4:30 and was able to read them and still give a reasonable, rational vote on Mondays. And there were some times that we only complained about it, but we still got the work done. I know that you can do it, so we will work to make that difference. But in this particular case, in this particular resolution, this is an emergency just like 911. We need it now.
Should we ask a question?
That's what I was going to do, um, floor recognizes, and then if you don't mind, because you were the one actually, the Alderman from the fifth floor, for any questions before I move on to Alderman from the first floor.
Let me give you a little one.
Alderman from the first floor.
I was gonna concur, I think that what Alderman Randall Hill said, if he has questions, I think we should, if anybody had the questions, move forward, let's allocate guidance, and I think this would be a good timeframe, and then see if we're gonna vote with it, but that's maximum weight, anytime before we make a vote, all our questions should be answered, and feel 100% comfortable in what we are agreeing to do or not to do.
I agree, Alderman from the second floor.
Okay, so the first question?
Yes.
Okay, it's up to you, is it the city?
Now, would you please point out what section you're reading from, so we know where you are?
So, the first part you said?
She didn't write this announcement, the, um, the Harvard.
So, I'm after the safety, they say we're not gonna find us on the state statute 5, I O T S, 750 slash 15.4 A. What do you feel is going to happen if you don't get it?
Is that me?
If we continue to operate, that is according to the law.
Exactly. I don't have any authority with that.
Yeah, I don't have that, I don't have the authority yet, so I'm comfortable with the statute.
You just gotta give me the state number, and then the next one. This says, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, after 2017, the population was 24,908. We hold on, don't we have to be able to 25?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, don't we need to, we want an ordinance to keep our home status, or are we on that?
That's a resolution issue, uh, that's a resolution issue.
Well, there's a question, if you're not moving, that's an option, if you're wrong.
Well, first of all, you are from the rule currently, until the next census data is reported, and we will get that at the end of 2020. That's one of the things we raised at the council workshop, and we have options that we will have to examine going forward into, which is why we raised it as a concern at that time.
I got a question, sorry. How many kind of dispatchers do you have?
Chief, how many currently? Seven.
Seven, so all seven being guaranteed, that they're replacing us in this part?
Well, we're trying to move them somewhere else. Now, wait, hold on, you got to come to work, and you got to do your job, so as long as that's happened, I don't see much of a problem.
Yeah, so from these seven dispatchers, we don't have access to 67 of them?
Yes.
So, from seven dispatchers, we don't have access to 67 of them?
Yes.
Because Mr. Lewis, for you, when you said we get this money back from the state based on the type of call of us?
We get, we get part of the grant from the 911 funds that you pay on your home bill, they can return that money to us.
So, I hear it really don't cost us too much?
Actually, it does, because it costs our taxpayers.
That's right.
Our taxpayers, taxpayers pay it, do that home bill, and we get it back, and that's what we use the current system of that, the 911 system.
So, we're, so county, our taxpayers want to pay it anymore?
Well, they still have to pay it, but they're not.
I got a question. Hold on, hold on, Alderman, sixth floor. Okay, Alderman, sixth floor.
According to the chart here, it's got city Harvey Police Department dispatches, it's got fiscal year 2017, 455,224, and with Cook County Sheriff Police 911 Center has first Now, for the first year for the Harvey Police Department, it's 381,347.93, and for year two, with Cook County Sheriff, it's 429,956. Well, and that's what I'm saying, is that the actual sheriff department numbers here exceed what we're paying Harvey. Can you explain in detail how we're saving?
Hold on, I would like Dr. Anderson to answer that question.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Anderson, I, hi, I'm special assistant to Chief Winters, helped write this document, this cost benefit analysis. So, one thing that the cost benefit analysis does, is it takes into consideration not just financially, but also the utility of the document. So, for example, right now, we only have seven dispatchers, one dispatcher is on leave, they're working 12-hour shifts, they're not up to training, we're not up to code in terms of the 25,000, they also don't get the chance to take bathroom breaks, we had a dispatcher that was pregnant, and she had to call someone from patrol in order to be able to use the restroom. So, in addition to this, what the cost benefit analysis does, is it takes into consideration all of these variables, and so it also takes into consideration the fact that there are no GPS that are currently on the squad cars, and additionally, the system goes down at least once or twice a week, which means that we don't know where the officers are, and the dispatchers have to use their own geographic knowledge to try to locate where the emergencies are happening and to send the officers there. So, it looks like...
How did that change with?
Hold on, let, let, let him finish, right?
Well, this is a part, this is a part of the state, that's why I interrupted, you know, because I wanted to know, if the GPS is not working in Cook County, whoever doing the dispatcher, whether it's Harvey or Cook County, how does it change if they don't know, because they're gonna need the, the tech, the GPS?
Well, they will, so they're going to add our new CAP system, so all of our squad cars will get new MDTs, there's other computers within the squad cars, so they will know. We'll get all the radios, and so that's the cost benefit analysis, not just takes into consideration the financial aspect, but we will be saving as time goes on, so throughout the length of the contract, we will be saving.
And how long is this contract?
Just five years, and so, right now, while Harvey does have access to those 911 tax funds, which comes in through a grant, we are not up to code, as Mr. Control Lewis said, so as a result, we don't really have access to those funds. Once we get into code with Cook County, that money will come to Harvey, which Harvey will then turn around and pay, so it won't be coming out of pocket, those funds.
So, I'll say what I...
So, question to you, Mr. Williams, when you spent, what, 180,000 on IT work at the police department, what did you spend for another police department?
We, we got, that's their whole school IT issues.
What is, what is it?
We build a server. Yeah, the server. It's the entire backbone, I mean, the, the whole, the whole issue with the police department is to, what we start trying to do, what we fall, this all this, this is to make this paperless, because again, you have digital records, it's easy to come open the records, the records technically are always there, the lights, so, I mean, there, this, the 911 system is just one component of it. And to add to Dr. Anderson, the real savings is that we don't have that depth in the equipment necessary to really have a top tier 911 system. Not to mention the home field, for the 911 line, it's quite a bit.
So, you think you have the vote in front of you?
I do, I, I put it up.
Okay, so, that's that, so we need to find some of that money?
Yes, because what that section requires is that prior to July 1st, 2017, we were supposed to consolidate our 911 service, and we didn't do that, and until we do that, we don't, we aren't even eligible for consolidation grants, so, pardon me?
Do we have to get the grant?
I don't know that we would need it, so, they'll bring us complaints with the justice department.
That's right, we actually got the grant, we got the 911 funds, but they're just no grants for whatever they have.
Say hi to everybody. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Chief Park Sheriff's Police, and I sat here and I'm just listening to everything that everyone says, and the elephant in the room is, you guys are scared of the county, and scared of the county having some type of input or control into what goes on in Harvey. That's, that's not the case, that's not the case. Since the transition of Mayor Clark, Chief Winters, we've been in this town since January, up and down the streets, these guys work for me, every Brown uniform you see works for me, and all we wanted to do was support you guys, not the mayor, not the chief, but the citizens of Harvey. That's all Sheriff Darke ever wanted, didn't matter who sat in that chair, if the person who sat in that chair just asked, hey, can you help me? If the person that sat, the chief asked, can you help me, we're coming. So, this deal right here, it's not, it's not just a deal with Harvey. I mean, Marty's my subject matter expert on this, he can tell, I can tell you all the towns that are partnering with us because it saves you money. Evanston is talking about coming on board, because it can save them a million dollars to go into the community and do a lot of other things. So, I know we're going back and forth, I know a lot of people got a lot of questions and things like that, but it's all a benefit for you citizens of Harvey at the end of the day, and like I said, in three months, if you don't like what you're getting, we can walk away, but at the end of the day, end of the day, it's about that 911 call. At the end of the day, it's about accountability for this man to know where his officers are, just by looking at a screen, oh, he's at 154, 4, 10, on a traffic stop, we don't know that right now. Those people sitting in the room answering phone calls, it's dark, and tongue, I don't know where my officers are. This technology that we're trying to give you guys is awesome, it is awesome. It is awesome, and it brings you up to speed. It brings you up to speed to where we should get in the 21st century in regards to technology. So I know, I know a lot of people are, you know, apprehensive and, and don't want to jump on board, but the thing is, is about safety. Smart schools, 911, he mentioned it. Some go out at the schools. Teachers have to hit a button. All the, everything populates on a computer screen, police on the way. Nobody has to run for a phone and say, I'm at school such and such. So at the end of the day, it's about the community, and that's all we've done since this man became an officer. This man sat in his chair, is, is the helper, and this is another layer of helping. And like I said, Harvey's not the only town who is talking about coming over. A lot of towns have a lot of issues. You got a lot of friends and families who work in dispatch. You know, and they don't want people to lose their jobs. This man just said, we got more work to do. We gonna find some places for these people, work for these people to do. And that's tremendous, because I don't want anybody to lose their job. We even have it set up that they can come and be one of the, what, sixty-five, sixty-seven? You just got to take the test and show that you can handle. But we gonna give you that opportunity if we come to your town and say, hey, we gonna have a 911, but come on, let's see if you can work for us. So hey, this man took it in his hands and said, no, we got plenty of work to do in the city of Harvey. So like I said, I, I sat here and I wanted to be quiet about it, but at the end of the day, that 911 call says, my mother with dementia, she left the house two hours ago. And I don't know where she is. It's thirty degrees at night. If it comes, if it's not analog, you get a busy signal, it goes to voicemail, and it does not happen. It does not happen with these, with these ladies and gentlemen who work for this man. People can go to bathroom, go to lunch, you know, people, people feel impressed, come to work. You know, these officers on the street, knowing that, hey, the department really reached out. They have my back out here on these streets, because it's tough. I say it all the time, this badge is not shiny enough. This is a tough job. Sometimes policing is not very easy, but this system here, and I guarantee, I guarantee you guys can see the difference in what you receive from your police department. It will tell this man every day what's going on and hold these officers accountable. Hey, wait, hey, why were you sitting here for two hours?
Thank you, Chief.
I just, I just wanted to say, I appreciate you, um, coming out, Sheriff. The situation, I think everybody's really intimidated by the Sheriff's Department, I think we're all here. And it's a lot of good residents in the city of Harvey. We just trying to move and move forward and get things going in the direction that we need to go. I think we kind of got on this resolution a little bit too long. I think.
We ask more questions. We need to get them answered. So all of the fifth board.
So let's, let's put something out there.
All of the fifth board. All of the fifth board.
Yes. No, listen here. Um, again, most, most of this, all I really wanted was a discussion, because within that discussion, a lot of my questions kind of got answered. Uh, thank you, uh, Chief. So, uh, with, with the, with the seven potential jobs, one of the questions I wanted to ask is, is can some of them apply? Thank you. That's the one question I wanted to ask, because I do know that we have jobs available, maybe, you know, this is still an opportunity. I love, if I love dispatching, now they have the opportunity to, to go over into that as well. Um, I also, I did read that we had some interviews with the current people, um, that are currently dispatching. And so it seems from this particular analyst that they are in agreement that this is better than the current work situation that they are going through. And mind you, not all of the questions are just for me, because I did, I did work there for eight years. So a lot of stuff that I read here is absolutely true, uh, far as breaks, the work environment, the condition of the facility that they work in, all this stuff is very true. But it's also so, so the public understand why this is necessary. So that's why we have to have a discussion regarding it. Um, also with the, uh, part of the fiscal years, again, I, I, it's great to have a cost-saving measure, but the, the, the biggest point that I raise to all of this is that not they were saving the money, but it's the upgrade, um, in technology that equals better safety, that more so interest me than just saving the money. Because if we were to save the money, but not getting the same technology, then I would be against this. Um, second part of that, I wanted to know, what is the, what is the phase of the implementation of this? So, so basically, how long is it going to take before this, this is happening? Like, what are we, what are we talking about, the length of time? And then you talked about the input of equipment into the vehicles. What is the estimated cost when the time is going to happen? What are we, what are we looking at? How many squad car? I mean, you don't have to give me the number of squad cars, but just, before we're really operating and this is up and operating, what is the length of time that we're talking about?
Talking about being worked from ninety to a hundred eighty days.
Okay, and what is the cost? The initial setup cost? I, I got the monthly costs, but we still have.
The setup costs are covered by our ETSB, so there will be no cost to the city. So we'll provide the officers with radios, and we'll provide them with MDTs. So for example, the radios, um, purchasing fifteen radios, they're seventy-five thousand dollars. Our ETSB is picking up that cost. And then the equipment that goes into squad cars is approximately about five thousand dollars per squad car. We also pick up that cost too.
Last question, thank you, I appreciate that. If we were to, let's say, then we grab another five squad cars, will you continue to figure the cost, or at that point, we would leave, figure the cost?
No, that, that's part of our agreement, is that we, uh, pick up the technology cost for you, so radios, uh, squad car computers. They get more squad cars and we'll put them with the computers in there.
Thank you, that'd be awesome. Oh, sorry. Is there, does this increase that 911 taxes? Does that, uh, have the potential going up, or will it not cost the residents any more money?
No, it doesn't cost you any more money.
We, 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 what was that? What about the future, not now?
Well, you know, there's something about the future that I just can't tell. But, but what I can say is, well, the county lead from the history, based on what we're seeing now, there, there's, there's not going to be an increase. I mean, the state can do whatever it does, the county can do whatever it does. You know, we pay taxes here in the city of Harvey. A lot of those taxes don't even come with us. So, you know, I can't.
Who controls the, the tax, for the 911 taxes that goes up?
I believe we.
So.
If I'm correct, unless, unless it's mandated from the.
It's the state legislature.
Yeah, unless it's mandated from the state legislation, yeah.
So, so then, I'm, I'm kind of trying to answer the question, so if we control it, then I think we can say.
But if the state makes a change.
Right.
We have to make that change.
Right, right, right.
Right.
But other than that, all, all things being considered, I get it.
Yes, yes. Uh, all of the, all of the second board.
What would be the cost to get it done by the end of this week? Say it again. What would be the cost to get it done by the end of this week?
He said, he said, what would be the cost to get it done by the end of this week?
Get what, uh?
Get. What was that?
It may still go via the state, uh, because it's a 911 consolidation. So there's a process that mandatorily you have to go through the state, and it has to be approved. So that process by itself is a minimum of ninety days.
I only added fifty-five questions, that's like we're giving the board.
Uh, the board recognizes the, all of the, the fresh board.
Thank you. Just for clarification, so we approve this today. 911 operators will not start accepting the calls from our residents until ninety days from now?
That's correct. And then once the state approves the consolidation, which is typically about ninety days, that's when everything will change on.
Okay, now, that's a question. If, and, and I'm sitting here, trying to keep my mouth shut on this, but if we're entering into a ninety-day agreement, we're, we could be changing our minds and the systems that have been up and running. So is it ninety days from today's date, or is it ninety days after it's up and running?
That's a good question.
I'm sorry, what?
That's a good question.
Oh, is it, oh, I'm not, I'm sitting here and I'm like, I, I, I have to ask that. So is it ninety days from this date that, 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 um, the contract can be renegotiated either on your end or the city's end, or is it ninety days after it's implemented?
It's the, the notices in the IGA, I believe it's, um, a hundred and eighty days notice that you give if you wanted to cancel the contract. But the ninety days is, once we turn everything into the state, that's for them to approve everything. It has to go through several different boards. Now, since this is a consolidation, and it's reducing the amount of PSAPs, we haven't had any issues thus far when we've done that they've approved everything. Um, and if we can get anything fast-tracked, we'll get it fast-tracked. But this has to go through an administrative law judge, and has to go through the statewide 911 advisory committee. So there's a legal process that's involved with it. Uh, the, the county's been through about eight different times, so we're very familiar with it. And, you know, we're waiting for basically, uh, the legislators to make their decision on it. And that's why the ninety days. Otherwise, we will be good as soon as possible.
My, my next question to you is, I'm sure other communities are discussing this same process. So the sooner we get our application in, the less delayed out the road, because other communities will be proactive in doing this as well.
Correct.
Hold on, from the second board.
Well, um, when, like I said, when we've done consolidations, and they've approved them, we've reduced the number of PSAPs. But what some agencies have done is, for example, you're under twenty-five thousand. If you file the application with the state to request a waiver, that would go to them and they could deny your waiver to have to consolidate. But thus far, with the eight agencies that we've consolidated, all of those have gone through with no problem.
Okay, then next question. To the, what, the House of Representatives, or somebody that have to hold them?
It's the, uh, 911 Advisory Board in Springfield.
Any other question? Thank you all, and thank you for your time and attention. So if it is possible, Resolution 2903, Chair, what did you take the motion? I made the motion.
I'll second.
Move by third, second by first. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Talbert.
Yes.
Alderman Randall L.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Alderman Kuda.
Yes.
Alderman Keith.
Yes.
And Alderman Jowinski.
Yes.
Resolution 293, X, watching here.
The next on the agenda is Resolution 2904, Resolution establishing an intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Office of the Comptroller and the city of Harvey regarding access to the comptroller's local debt recovery program. Ms. Williams, Mr. Timmons, all of the, all of you. Ms. Williams, please, uh, explain this order.
This is a program that the, um, State Comptroller Suzanne Mendoza offers to communities, in which we go into the program with her, with her office to offset the state taxes for individuals who are delinquent with, with funds that are owed to the city of Harvey. So if you have an outstanding ticket from a year ago, they will be able to intercept, intercept state taxes to be able to defray that cost and, and award those funds to the city. These are for, this is similar to a collection agency, but on a state level. This is something that is, is, we have quite a few age-invoiced, aged accounts with the city, so there's quite a few dollars that are just left on the books that we aren't able to collect at this point.
The Chair, what did you take the motion? So move. Motion by six.
Second.
Second by third. For if you would please call the roll.
Alderman Randall L.
Yes.
Alderman Keith.
No.
Alderman Kuda.
Yes.
Alderman Jowinski.
Yes.
Alderman Talbert.
Yes.
And Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Motion carried out. Resolution 29.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Resolution 2905, um, before we, um, go into any, any possible discussion on that, um, we have Representative Kane McKenna, where is he?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Just give us one second, sorry. Um, Kane McKenna, this is a, um, the Resolution, Inter-It's An Agreement, Kane McKenna Associates for Economic Development Services. So what I'm doing is I wanted to just take a little time to explain that to, uh, to the council and to the remaining residents of what it is we're trying to do.
This is all for Ray James, it's called, just in case anybody get down.
Oh, exactly. I'm out of the bus now.
Uh, this is bad.
Yeah. I make the motion. It's going to take five minutes.
So move.
All right.
Can we get a second?
Second, all right, we got a second. We got a second.
All of the favorites here?
All right.
All right, take. All right, take.
See, this is why we don't have people walk by the expensive stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
We are, we've been working on some things in the city. And some of these things are going to actually appear, maybe appear to be old news, but they're not, it's new news. Things we're trying to do here in the City of Harvey. And I want the Alderman to understand, even though I have to have these conversations on a more informal matter, and also with the citizens as well. But in 2005, and I think some of you actually remember because you were here during that time, participating during that time, we had what's called a station area plan. It was a plan to redevelop downtown here, here in the City of Harvey. This is how the cover of the original Harvey Station Area Plan looked. It was actually done by Center for Naval Technologies, Tom Anderson, Randall, Mr. Darno, I remember you were part of it. Is anybody else in the room that was part of the back then? Very, a lot of community stakeholders that were part of this station area plan. Part of this station area plan is a thing that's called transit-oriented development. And in this plan, what we set forth in 2005, the City of Harvey did, was set forth to do several things. I'm just going to go briefly over the bullet points for once. Try 12 to 15 new businesses a month. Monitor all vacant and abandoned properties. Keep streets and alleys as clean as possible. Implement the old city hall restoration project. Offer community-friendly events. Implement public safety improvements, more visible police presence, installation of surveillance cameras, purchase of new equipment, zero tolerance drug activity, increase landlord incentive licensing, training, and inspection efforts. Audit the existing businesses prior to license renewal. Some of those things we've already started on with the help of the building and planning department, the great work that they're doing. Some of that work we've already started on with our public works department. Some of that work we've already started on with our police department. All of these things here, all of those departments, but also, of course, with the mayor's office, finance department, and the like. So these are just some of the things that we're trying to do. Back in 2005, there was a map area. If you look, all the areas within the city of this works are there. In the area of the Red dot I, that is all areas that are now available, will be available for future land use in the City of Harvey. Corporates of downtown area. We've had conversations about downtown, how we want to revitalize downtown, what we need to do about downtown, because we know that it's a key and core geographic area in our city. So we are going to be working to do that. This is just a little bit larger of what it is. So that middle line that you can see, this way. Yes, that's 154, we're going right down the middle. For enough, that's 154, Chair.
Second floor.
Yes, actually, second floor. And part, third. So some of the people who did participate in this, and I just, because I just want to give those some credit before we move on, of course, John Bradley, W. D. U., Kevin Givens, Herman Head, some of these people that are with us, Adam Mahone, Mr. Mitchell, Frank Mitchell, Mr. Patel from Dallas County, he's no longer there. There's Andrea Paxton, who's right there in the audience. Who else? I can't see too well.
James Sims.
Yeah, James Sims, there he is, right there. And Molly Pringle as well. Also, we have, we can see it on here. You guys are a little bad now, it's not going to happen. And then we also have, just thank you from RTA Metro Pace, HZ Corporation, of course, Valderrama Correctional Associates, Center for Naval Technology and War Associates. These are the ones that, you know, come out of the work of law without community partner. Some of you can remember, maybe not all of you can remember, when Harvey downtown actually looked like that, when there was buildings all the way down. And so what the transit-oriented development and the station area plan is trying to do is trying to work up from what we once had to something a little bit more modern. Now, there's, when you go and look at these types of plans online, and you can, you see these phenomenal buildings and structures and all, I'm not going to give you that expectation. We're trying to bite off this elephant one bite at a time. So we're first going to try to make a better presentation to our city. Along with that transit-oriented plan, it's also developing of new homes, okay, in the area as well. More spaces, more parking. Of course, as you can see here, they use hauntings and planters in the front to help distinguish their particular business establishment. Of course, the use of planters as well and pavers to help distinguish the area, but also to make the area more soluble for water as well. So those are some of the things, just to give you an idea of what we're pushing for, our first step, okay? I'm not promising you, the Emerald said. I don't want you to go out there and say, "Man, say he gonna do this kind of?" No, you can't say that. We are taking this one step at a time to try to get us to where we need to go. Now, in order for us to do this, and also to use the great space as well. But in order for us to do this, we have to start making some moves ourselves. And there's some lifting that we must do, really, we must do as a council. The original plan had potential townhouses, 154th Street, west of downtown, 1015 units per year, condominiums, 20 to 30 units, retail restaurants downtown, 10 to 15,000 square feet, also offices downtown at $5 to $7,500, $5,000 per unit, $7,500 per unit. Some of the ways of funding this particular type of venture here in the city is, of course, the general fund resources. Well, if I put it to the Comptroller right here, he'll shake his head and say no, because we don't have those type of general fund resources. Two other things that we can possibly do is to create a tax increment financing, so also business improvement business. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce you to our newest, new economic development director, Nick, and I always mess with your name, Nick, a couple of times. Em, the G. Greg, Greg. Everybody got yourself a meeting?
Yes.
Okay, do it to all the women.
Right.
Okay, there you go. I always mess it up, though. I want to say grief, but anyway. Nick will come before you and he will continue his presentation, explain to you a little bit more about what it is we're trying to do in our downtown area. Nick will be so kind.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you're already loaded.
I'm great.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, citizen member of the city council, and thank you for staying late. Just want to hit a few points and then turn it over to Phil McKenna from Kane McKenna and Associates. So looking at transit-oriented TOD development for the City of Harvey, it's a proven strategy, it's been utilized by a lot of communities in suburban Chicago. Typically, you see in towns that have a wealth of assets related to metro or pace. In this community, we have both pace and to really heavily utilize metro stations. So I think this really is an opportunity to leverage those assets. Plus, we have an existing plan from 2005, as the mayor alluded to. Successful TIP, this is right from the plan, it says, successful TOD includes a vibrant mix of commercial, homeless, and residential uses. And that's what we're striving for, is that mix. And also striving for, the more that density that you see in vibrant downtowns, whether it's La Grange out west, or Homewood in the South suburbs, or Evanston in the northern suburbs, you see that vibrant mix, you see that density. You see people that live close to those train and pace assets. The other point, it touched on blockability, that kind of goes hand in hand with having transportation. It also sets up an opportunity for more bike. You're seeing a lot of millennials rely on bikes, they don't want all cars anymore. Car ownership's down, bike is up. I also want to get on some of the past work that's been done, because there has been a lot of rockwork already laid by past city councils. In '05, there was, of course, the TOD plan. In 2008, there was a zoning change to allow for transit-related, TOD-related overlay district, which puts limits on certain types of uses that would be incompatible with TOD. From 2019, of course, we all know that we, through the state capital build, there was a $8 million grant that's going to be funneled through the RTA to benefit the Harvey Transportation Center. That's going to be really helpful to strengthening the assets that we have. We just submitted a couple of weeks ago an application to update our TOD plan, so a lot of the strategies that we had in 2005 were to try to get consultants to help us just revisit some of those strategies and some of the tactics to see if they still make sense after 15 years. And then, 2020, we will continue to look for ways to fund capital improvements. Maybe not through the general fund necessarily, but through other revenue streams. TOD priorities. The existing plan identifies that vibrant mix, I talked about. The TOD zoning overlay actually does a good job of summarizing it, too. I know it's been a few years, but the tag by encouraging a mix of moderate high-density development, creating a pedestrian-friendly environment, encouraging a mix of uses, and again promoting pedestrian activity and human interaction. They have people running into each other after that, you know, be prompted to meet. And lastly, having different housing options, whether it's at the higher end, middle, or more affordable housing options, and for senior and younger populations. So that's kind of what's been looked at as priorities in the past and maybe probably will influence decisions going forward. And that's the map that you saw earlier. And that's the area that we would look at if we were to pursue the TIP district to look at this area. So it connects basically from the train line going all the way west to approximately Wood Avenue, that's what was in the 2005 plan. That's the area that we would want to do some new villages with the TIP district analysis that you have to do on the state statute. And that would provide a corridor that reaches west to create that walkable area to the train line and to the pace stations. Again, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Phil McKenna to have him talk about his core tool, which is tax increment financing. TIP is not the strategy, but it's the tool that allows us to implement a lot of the strategies that are included by the plan document and in the plan update that we're seeking. Phil?
Thanks. Hi, I'm Phil McKenna, and I'm a principal and one of the founders of Kane McKenna Associates. We've been around for a long time, I don't mean tonight, but 35 years. And we had the pleasure of certainly seeing her before. I want to talk to you a little about tax increment financing, but just sort of tie it into what's been presented thus far. We had a chance to meet with the mayor, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Breckford. We talked about the vision that the city had. And the vision is terrific. To make a vision come true needs some other investment. And nowadays, one of the tools to get private investment into your community is tax increment. So many of you are not familiar with just a quick overview of TIP. You set your own economic development goals, each municipality does that. And in setting those goals, you then formulate that into an area plan in the area that the mayor and Nick described. So you set the goals, they translate into a TIP plan. And then you have certain objectives, plans, strategies, and I might also put budgets out there, that you're going to put forth in that TIP plan in order to attract private investment. What TIP is, is really, it's really pretty simple, it's two buckets. The first bucket is the base revenue that each taxing district now achieves from that area. They still get that for a period of up to 23 years. The tax increment constitutes that second bucket. And it's incremental revenues that occur from redevelopment. So what it's essentially doing is keeping that redevelopment tax dollars in that area. Does it increase, doesn't increase property tax. It just redirects to, into two different buckets. Successful TIP district, and they're not always this successful, but it gives us a line, a colored line, but I think that's a blue line going up. Whereas the other line is straight across, that's where the base sits. What you're trying to do is to get the investment in the area so that you can ride the wave up. What do you do with a TIP plan? And that's what we're proposing to do, is to start a study of the area for TIP qualifications. But first, you set the redevelopment area goals and objectives. I think you got a good start there with what the mayor, what Nick presented. Then you look at, you say, does this area qualify under state law? That's a study that involves looking at the state law, look at the qualification criterias, look into the buildings, look at the mix, look at the comprehensive plan. That usually takes about 60 days to do that. You look at what the base equalized success valuation is, which is what it is in the most recent tax year. And then you estimate based upon the vision that you have, what the projected equalized success valuation would be. You set a budget. Budget includes eligible costs under the TIP Act, principally infrastructure improvements, incentives for developers, grants or loans to existing businesses that you want to encourage to stay there. It's quite flexible, and it's all within the city council's control. 23-year plan, and you suggest what the land uses are going to be. Everything in a TIP plan, and this is important to understand, comes back to the city council. The developer wants an incentive, they have to have an agreement with the city council. And they have to adhere to the principles of the plan that you've set out. One of the major steps, the first one is determining the proper area. Study the qualifications of the area, determine the objectives, both for the area as a whole and for specific properties, determine the budget, and then engaging the public. You have a joint review board meeting, which constitutes all the other major taxing districts, county, the school districts, library district, park district. All of them get to sit around and look at the plan as it's being developed and get what their judgment is of the plan. They're not, they aren't a veto item, but they have the right to give input. You also are going to hold a minimum of one public area. And sometimes you want more than that, sometimes you want more public forums to get the input into that plan. You mentioned past ordinances, and then you still are, you're sort of halfway there. Then you still have to say to the development community, this is what we've got to offer, we want you to come down and look at. One of the reasons, quite frankly, that you look at the TIP district is not only offensive, but it's defensive. Because, you know, Nick mentioned somebody, so Evanston, Wheaton, Glen Allen, Downers Grove, just about every community in the South suburbs has TIP districts. The question is, are they the right ones for you and are you using them prudently? And that's what hopefully we can help you to put forth to the rest of the community. Because then you do less public improvements if you want, and you want to help existing businesses. What are you going to do to help businesses grow in that area? TIP does not guarantee development, but when it's used correctly, it's a valuable tool. It's a tool in that kit. And because it involves the increase of future property taxes, it's not taking it from any home, it's encouraging that development to occur. So what we propose to do is to work with the city and city council and come up with an initial assessment, deliver a qualification plan, and as you decide forward to do the full TIP implementation process. So I think that's all we got. This is the key element, I'll go backwards.
So what we're trying to do, as you can see, council and audience, we're trying to make honestly moves on some, on some things that can really help revive lives, specifically the city downtown area. There was a lot of community buying in 2005. We believe we still have that community buying in from not just the community, residential community, but from the state, other business stakeholders and the community. We have a lot of work to do in order to pull this off as a, as a council. But it starts with TIF. It starts, in my opinion, with having the expertise in place to start to do this part. And that's the reason why, the reason for this presentation is that. So K. McKenna is that organization that we believe has the knowledge and the expertise to be able to help us through this phase of our project. And we don't want to let language. So we are hoping that we can get, should I get it correct? Resilience. May 9/5. Yes, Resilience, Interim Agreement, K. McKenna Associates, Economic Development Services. So this is in addition to what Nick does for us. This is specifically in helping us with this TOD area and establishing that TIF. That's correct, Mr. McKenna, and establishing that TIF. And that's what we're looking for, yes. Okay, well, chair recognizes the order from the six who.
Okay, um, the gentleman right here, you have gave us a list with some municipalities on there, and at the bottom it's got, well, education, little stars, double stars. The double stars indicate that includes TIF established through industry jobs and recovery that, that stemmed from 2005 when we initially started, okay? And I've noticed that.
Can you tell us what they, uh?
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, this is, uh, section 487, on the map at Target, the great city of Harvey. And I noticed that. Well, there we go, Harvey. It has two stars. So, and it says that Harvey is indicative good for, for its industry. Would you agree that, you mentioned in your, in your presentation, that some of the smaller box stores are able to enhance their value to bring big box stores into our community? For example, Walgreens, okay? Would we be able to bring other industries in because Walgreens is already, oh, we don't have much economic development here, but we have a family dollar, we have a, a dollar tree. So keep in mind, this is a primary street in African-American community predominantly, okay? And we don't have a lot of resources, so we don't have a lot of college educated people that live in our community.
Is this it?
Yeah. Okay, before I make it, before I make it, I see the Rosa Town area, for example. I saw the new industry, the new housing and everything go up, and then it attracted people to come in, okay? Now, what type of people, if we do this TIF and develop our downtown areas, which I'm all in favor of, and I would love to see that occur, but I'm, I'm, I want to know, you know, what income, what sorts of people would be attracted to want to come back into our community?
So I'll answer that question. Because, because I want to be clear, before we even go here, okay? I've lived in Harvey for 50 years. I've been there all my life, I don't plan on going anywhere else. I'm going to die here, okay? There are people who I respect and I love in this community that I hope that they choose to do the same. We're not getting types of people in the city of Harvey. We're getting Harvey residents in the city of Harvey, and no types of people coming, okay? Now, one of the things that I have done, I've always done, was supporting Harvey first. That's why when we were talking about the Wood Street project the other day, and I was talking about Illinois Department of Transportation, and how I said, look, we got to make sure the people along this corridor that we are using local, okay? Providing local jobs to local people. We are doing this because the people who live here are the ones who deserve a good quality of life. Not because we're trying to fight somebody else, okay? And we, and, and believe it or not. But, but, look, I'm not saying that it wouldn't hurt, just for consideration. I'm sorry, this is my show. So. We keep a lot of businesses open in Homewood. Those businesses are not just open because Homewood people go to those businesses. Those, those businesses are open because people from the city of Harvey come with their money to keep those businesses open. It's about time we add some of those businesses in our community and we were able to use our financial resources to do this. So we're not inviting other people. All we're trying to do is, it would be nice.
They have grocery stores.
If I simply could have a grocery store that was right down the street and they could get good food and stuff, where they could get their, their prescriptions, okay? Where we can go to a doctor, you know, and, and not have to go all the way out, you know, from the city of Chicago just to find the goods. So we're working to do this. It's not about the type of people. We know the type of people we got, we got Harvey people. And that's, that's all it's been, and believe me, unfortunately, at this particular point in time, I don't see too many people just rushing in, breaking down the doors and getting in. But in the future, in the future, no, I got this. I got, I got this. Okay, well, let me finish, allow me to finish. So I just want you to understand, because I want to make sure that people understand, because I give these words like, they begin with a G, okay? And then all of a sudden, all this panic starts. We are talking about providing these people who live in this city with a good quality of life. That's all we're talking about. And, and we have enough money and enough resources where we can support our own community if we spend our dollars within our community. But we cannot do that. So just to understand where this is going, that's where this is going.
Well said, well said. I think we're on the same page. We pretty much say the same thing.
Our motion, 287. Second. Who's the second? The great, the great historic, the historic.
Her should be historic.
Alderman Crute.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Alderman Randallwell.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Westick.
Yes.
And Alderman Hope.
Yeah, so I know the name of the mayor, Mr. Williams, for downtown Harvey.
Thank you. Whole Business, Board Hisses, Resilience, the City of Harvey, Board is 33.
We skip onto discussions, D and E. I apologize for sorry. I apologize, all. Okay. Five D, a discussion extending seasonal, seasonal workers that was brought to us by the Alderman of the 41, Alderman, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Basically, what the situation is that we have seasonal workers that are working for the city, starting in, I believe, early summer, and their job is going to be ending on November 1st. The problem that we have, we're heading towards November, and we're still working on some work. We still have wars that have not been cleaned up. I hold making property, everybody knows the situations, but for whatever reason, the job hasn't been done and is not complete. So I was trying to see if I can either get a motion or a suggestion that move this to the Finance Committee, but this first wants to see if we can extend. We don't have an authority. Okay, we're going to have an authority, but this, this is a discussion. So that's the situation that's going on right now. We have a massive amount of work that still has to be done, and we have, the wars have been. The previous conversation that I had with Mr. Williams about the fifth war, historic fifth war, yes, thank you, just about some of the issues that we have with some of the high grass that has gone through the season without being, you know, having an opportunity to be cut, some of the issues that some of the residents raised about certain property that is, needs to be taken care of because it, it really is at a point where it's, it's a public safety issue. So the real question then, sir, is whether or not, because of the rotation that's being, that was being used, basically, if we're coming back to the fifth war and we're going to be able to, as, as his word, like you're sending an army to each war, so if we're going to send an army to the fifth war before November 1st, then it's not a concern for me, because then that army will still be available. But if you, if the honest assessment is that we're not going to be able to get to you before that cutoff date, and so then we're not, we're no longer going to have an army, then we do, I would ask for the consideration to extend that, at least before we go into the winter months, make sure we hit each, you know, hit the last, I think you guys three more left, from what I was heard, total six, fourth, and fifth.
We, we, I'm still asking that question. That's all you were, six now. Have we made it to six yet? You got, you got two yet?
No, sir.
No concern, okay, but just so you know, at the community exclusive meeting, how much of the people to six who are who call in and ask?
Well, thank you, man, we appreciate it. We give a ton of time off every day, people are safe.
Just so you understand.
But I do have to say, to remind you, um, I'll leave over here. Me, he had mentioned with the item, item E, about purchasing new trucks.
Well, we haven't got there yet.
I know, I know, but, but this relates to item D as well, okay? Now, with additional seasonal workers, workers, okay, if, if they, we're at a point now where grass is growing as fast, okay? But we got tons of couches and mattresses and debris and furniture and people fly nothing, and I need four or five spots today where the alleys are just filled. Now, I know Mr. Sappick, he's got, he's doing the best he can do with the equipment, but that loader that he has on there was back before Nick Graves was mayor.
What about the loader?
When he used to drive the loader, is it right? When he, before he was superintendent, he was driving the loader. That's how long we've had. It's raggedy, okay? We need another loader. Now, not to say that we don't need another truck, but we need another loader, okay? And that way, we had another loader, then we could utilize, you know, as far as picking up, because you see, the grass issue is going to be almost diminishing some, okay? But the trash issue, that's where I'm getting a lot of, a lot of the point from.
All right, so what's, Alderman's second ward?
I guess it's more of a comment, I'm going to leave the second ward to you finish, I'm really happy.
Okay, so what I, this is what I would suggest, because the Alderman of the fourth ward brought it up, I think we'll have a better assessment, first of all, probably this upcoming Wednesday, when we leave this Wednesday. What I would recommend is probably either Wednesday afternoon or somewhere following, because the Alderman of the fourth ward brought it up, that the Alderman and I can sit down and try to hash out the hours specifically. It's not excluding the historic, and of course, it's not excluding the great six. But if his issues are basically the same issues as yours are, I'm pretty sure we can figure that out together, and we don't have to have a meeting or induce an emergency once to. And you can always call a meeting, but you just call it for it.
No.
So we can try to, try to figure out that, if that would be okay.
I think, I think if you, if you could just guarantee us that you'll leave them on until the work is done, I think that's.
Well, because I have certain people over here that have to talk to and make sure that's feasible. Okay.
So?
So once again, if, I have to make sure that's feasible, and I don't want to sit there and say, yeah, because personally, we have to regard it? Of course, why not? But, you know, I'll say that, and then all of a sudden, I'm finding out something contrary to the standard that I nailed. So I want to be able to make a rational, reasonable decision, give you a real answer, you know, not to kind of, just kind of rose you off and, and the wars are hanging and win. And be able to say, this is what we're doing, this is where we're at, and at the end of the day, if we're not even live on it, then you can really look at me and say, no, man, that's, that's not right, because this is what you said. So I would like to be able to do that. So I'm figuring, Wednesday afternoon would be the soonest, but anytime Wednesday afternoon later, we should sit down, we should have that and figure it all out and work together for it.
Yes, sir, that's the normal time. Wednesday at 5:00 AM is my appointment time.
You mean that thing?
It's my appointment time, sir.
Yes.
No, I have Wednesday about, I thought I had Wednesday at 4:30.
Is this, wait, is this why you want me to show up? Does y'all know what y'all think? So, here we go. So Wednesday. Uh-huh. Wednesday is, uh, with Alderman, the Wednesday.
Next Wednesday is you.
Thursday, no?
Next Wednesday is.
Okay, this Thursday is Alderman Crute. It's, uh, we got a, it's Friday, we got two, we got Alderman Key at two, and Alderman Hope at five. And then you are, Mr. Rogers, you are at 12 on Tuesday, 22nd. And then you are Wednesday, Alderman Randallwell, on 23rd and 5:30.
But all, all thanks to Alderman, she said I can have her back.
Yeah, Wednesday's not a good day, I have two months to go, man, so.
I like talking to you for this, it's something about this.
Tuesdays are a problem.
That's fine.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think I'm here.
So if we can do that, you know, we'll figure, we'll figure that.
Okay.
Five E, if there's no other questions on five E, first of all, what you are.
No, actually, I just wanted to just mention a point that we need to be realistic. We at the end of the summer, I mean, we're heading into the winter. There's no way these jobs are going to be done by November 1st, that's two weeks away. So it's like realistic, we really just waste time. Really just need to get straight to the point, the job has to get done. We're going to need, we need more seasonal help or more part-time workers. There's no way around it. Two weeks away, we've been waiting all summer, and we don't got half the wars done, how we gonna do that in two weeks? I'm just being realistic, okay? And I'm also being realistic with the presentation that K. McKenna, McKenna has made about us bringing businesses to these communities and bringing new residents, situations like that. When people come to an area, they look and see how the area is being taken care of, you know, and we see these areas are not being taken care of. Who's going to want to invest when they go into the store, they look at the store, why they want to put a store there until you're looking back? This is old furniture, like garbage, debris everywhere down the street, you know? We need to make a good impression before we even start, you know, doing situations like that.
Well, that's what we get together on Wednesday, okay? So we are, I mean, my thing is I'm committed to trying to figure it out, just got to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
Okay, well, it is, for me, it's wrong with the fact. Now, E, the situation with the trucks, I don't understand, we do need a loader, but we got an opportunity, speaking to the superintendent of the street department, we have an opportunity there to two new trucks that we purchased. If we purchase, purchase additional two trucks, they'll be at the price of half. So basically, we'll be getting four trucks for the price of three. And I mean, we have trucks for every war when the snow comes and all the other things. And that's like, if we were a good budget person, you know, four trucks for the price of three, I mean, is this something that we can't get done?
So we're proposing to approve that, two more trucks at the price of three.
Unfortunately, we can't do that. I would love to, though.
I can't, all we can do is motion, but can we not go up to more trucks?
Well, so, so this is, this is what I was suggesting, Matt. I'm in favor, I'm in favor of the trucks as long as the council office says that we can afford to get them. I think. I think that that's a conversation the Finance Committee needs to have.
That's, that's what I was suggesting, that it go to the Finance Committee so we can work and figure out how we're going to come up with the resources and the money to get this job that we obviously know has to be done.
So does everybody know, in audience, what trucks, what he's talking about?
Yeah.
Yes, but I don't know if people in the audience even have a clue what we're talking about. So we, we were able to get two new snowplows. They were asked to park in front of the city hall for a brief period of time, and the. front of the, um, city hall, um, for a brief period of time, and the, um, the desire is to possibly purchase two more of those, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, yes, Alderman.
Uh, just, 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 cause I'm trying to, so that will give us a snow pile per ward, correct?
Yes.
And then my second question, I guess, would be the, I don't know the personnel, do we have a driver for each one of these trucks?
Well, with the program that we got with the seasonal workers, we're able to get two employees who, when you got their CBL license, so we added two more, and then we have two more in, in, in early stages of the CBL, so the next people have.
So right now, we don't have to play the war?
So we need to figure it out, the finance committee, uh, that would be a good place to start, have that, chairman would have that conversation with the comptroller and see what it is we can do, cause I'm definitely in favor of it. Tell me, tell me you wanna enlarge Brian, tell me you wanna enlarge streets, tell me you wanna enlarge police for the other department or bring in more, I'm always in favor of that, so, um, is that, is that it, Alderman? That'd be it, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, we, we can move on, um, we only got a little bit more to go. Ordinance number thirty-three eighty-three, an ordinance permitting Title VI of municipal code of Harvey regulating animals and pets and establishing regulations regarding the same referred to committee July twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, what is the pleasure of the council? Uh, the chair recognizes y'all from the second ward.
So that ordinance, uh, we wanted, uh, this is prepared, I didn't call the last council, uh, we have some days in the house, but, uh, attorney, you, were you able to get some last minutes or are you trying to change? Actually, it's me, so you know, we got to get those...
Hold on, let, let's get to it, because, because I got, I heard three voices at the same time.
No, so I was asking attorney, she had to change, okay? One of the questions, for example. We talked about the last minute, but I didn't have the, the second.
There were, there were a couple people with questions, but I wasn't sure what to change, so one of the issues was the way that the ownership of the property was defined because if somebody had guard dog.
Yeah, who wanted that one?
Oh, okay, so we had, what was the other?
Also, you said, no pit bulls, a few, a lot of people were saying that, who wanted that one, brother?
Right, and like, pit bulls, right.
Also, with the one about the property, the law rights, my land property, that they was sneaking up on or something like that.
So you want, get those P register?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
You can have pit bull registration.
Okay.
So, so in other words, we would remove, if you're looking directly at thirty-three eighty-three, it says no license shall be issued for any pit bull, you want that removed?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll go for that.
Sir, did we do this last meeting? You did. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It feels like a round.
I was like, he, like, like a lot of the day, John, we...
It's a very easy way for us to, and, and we'll, yeah, and we'll, and stay in committee.
Wait, what do you mean? No, we got to stay in committee.
Stay in committee.
But the, the changes, okay, okay, so maybe I had a misunderstanding. I, my understanding was that we were asking the changes, we were asking corporation council to make those changes, and so it can't come out of committee if the changes haven't been made.
And so corp, and so corporation council was waiting on the, from my understanding, for the calling of the, of the committee meeting.
Why?
Because of the chair, respect to the chair.
If you, if you make the, maybe, maybe I can...
We can make those changes now, which we're trying to do, but you're actually going into something else, I do want to let you know.
We, how can we make somebody on, tell you what, on the...
I'm amending your changes now.
Just like you amended, you amended, uh, agendas and amended this and that.
No, no, I, I like to do it, cause I'm trying to, we trying to move it all. So, yeah, we got, we got...
So from, from, if I'm correct, no license shall be issued for pit bulls, that part is removed. And then on the, um, here, what, council? The, um, which one was it? Um...
Was it that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is true, who wants to rule, let me see, uh, loose, uh, loose. Yeah, okay, attacks, violence, and threats, and children, ten days in the person, on the premises of the home, yeah, we need that.
Right, and I'm just trying to find it, what page it's on?
Five, five, five.
Five, got it. Yes, yes, got it. Let her see, chances, attacks, violence, or interferes with or physically intimidates individuals on, on the premises of the home, right? That's supposed to be removed.
Yeah.
So we go down with that.
Oh, wait, did you, did you want it removed, or did you want it to say that it was a person, like an invited person?
Removed, removed.
That's why people have, you know, a lot of us being attacked, and, and, and the terminology in, in, in this ordinance where it says pit bulls, the, the breed pit bull was originally bred from the American bulldog, and it stems off from other breeds now.
That's the one. So this, 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 it was a pit bull, no, it, it's nothing like...
Cause I, I should have, I got a little shit in me, I don't care nothing about pit bulls, I, I don't like them, but, a rock, a rock party is doing the same thing a pit bull would do. We cannot make a generalization, discriminate the exact breed.
So it also goes...
Yeah, so then what we can do is make a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended, and then you can just, you have to type it up and send it, it's done, and you don't have to review it again.
Yeah, but that's what we're trying to bring, though, we can come on. Ready, yeah?
So I would use a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended, ordinance, uh, thirty-three eighty-three as amended.
I think, uh, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the...
That's a motion by the second, and then second by the third, uh, please call the roll.
Alderman Crute.
Yes.
Alderman Dr. Wensky.
Yes.
Alderman Hope.
Yes.
Alderman Randall L.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Motion hearing.
Ordinance. Ordinance thirty-three and four, the ordinance making appropriations for the purpose, for the city of Harvey, for the fiscal year beginning May one, two thousand nineteen, and ending April thirty, twenty twenty. So, was that the, uh, motion by the sixth?
I'll check.
Second by the first, please call the roll.
Alderman Dr. Wensky.
Yes.
Alderman Randall L.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Alderman Hope.
No.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
And Alderman Crute.
Yes.
Motion hearing, ordinance thirty-three eighty-four passed.
Motion.
Motion, yeah. Um, needed a, a motion to go into executive session to discuss executive, uh, sessions items relating to pending litigation, moved by, uh, fair, yes, one, moved by the sixth, second by the first, third.
Alderman Key. You want to make that?
I will, yes.
If we don't agree to go into executive session, can we set a certain timeframe and stick to it?
Ten minutes.
Yes, okay, so one to executive session for ten minutes. Yes, yes.
Can't hear it, Tim.
Hey, sit down.
Can't hear it.
Motion by the, oh, oh, excuse me. No, the motion by the sixth, I'm, yes. I'm still losing, cause I don't know what's going on here, y'all.
Yes, I may.
Okay, please, please call the roll.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Hope.
Yes.
Alderman Randall L.
Yes.
Alderman Crute.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
And Alderman Dr. Wensky.
Yes.
All right, we are, are in the executive session at ten seventeen. Okay, we, it is ten thirty-nine, we need a motion to go back into, uh, the voting session.
I make the motion.
Motion by the third, second by the fifth, um, please call the roll.
Alderman Dr. Wensky.
Yes.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Alderman Crute.
Yes.
Alderman Randall L.
Yes.
Alderman Hope.
Yes.
And Alderman Key.
Yes. Chair will entertain a motion to approve of items discussed in executive session. So, session by the sixth, second by the third, please call the roll. Yes? Motion by the sixth, second by the third.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Alderman Dr. Wensky.
Yes.
Alderman Randall L.
Yeah.
Alderman Hope.
Yes.
Alderman Crute.
Yes.
And Alderman Key.
And, and the motion to...
I make the motion.
Motion by the first, second by the third.
Alderman Rogers.
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Keys. Alderman Randall L.
Yes.
Alderman Hope.
Yes.